Hi, I'm Jim Shaw, publisher of Lexington Times and Chair of the Board of Lex Media. I'm pleased to be here with Jill Hague, who is seeking her third term.
Correct.
On the Board of Selectmen and has served.
Select Board.
What's that?
Select Board.
I did it again. I did it again. So, right, and I apologize for that. I did, you know, I'm an old horse and learning new tricks is difficult, but I do apologize, and I know it's important. So, running for the Select Board. Now, when you first ran it was the Board of Selectmen.
It was indeed. That was my first, my first big project was to write that article, do that research, and argue that at town meetings.
Well, good for you, and I apologize to you then even more so. I didn't mean to offend your sensibilities.
You did not offend my sensibilities.
Okay, but you're running for your second term.
Third.
Third term. See, third term. See, you should be in this.
I'm throwing you off, aren't I?
So, the third term, but you've served in a lot of different capacities, including as Chair of the Board.
Correct.
Which I'm sure, you know, it changes the scope of what it means to be a member of the Select Board.
Yes.
When you're sort of leading the charge. So, you've had, in your, in your two previous terms, you've actually probably served in just about every capacity on the Board. So, thank you for your service on the Board. And tell me, you know, I guess the simple question is, so you're seeking a third term, and why is it so important for you to continue to serve on the Board?
So, thank you, and it's an interesting question, and it is one that I grappled with a little bit, because I do think that, you know, it's important for the town to have different views and different perspectives, but it's also very important, when you talk about what I've been doing on the Board, and really, we've crafted almost a new agenda in a lot of ways. We've been talking for years in Lexington about housing and about increasing our affordable housing, increasing attainable housing, trying to address that missing middle part of the market, employee housing, and in the last year, we've actually, 18 months maybe, we've made some significant changes. Obviously, the MBTA compliant zoning that we passed last year, but also, I spent five years as Chair of the Special Permit Residential Development Ad hoc Bylaw Committee, and we passed the revisions to that bylaw as well last year. And the fall before, we passed Open Space Residential Development. So, each of these are tools that we now have, which allow for different types of housing development to occur. They aren't themselves projects, but they are the zoning that will invite projects, and they invite projects that meet what we have been saying for years are our housing values in town. So, it's important to me to help see that first generation of projects and how they bring that zoning into reality. So, that's one big piece. And then the other big piece for me, you know, you know this, but my background professionally was as a Labor and Employment Attorney and HR Director, Labor Relations Director. In fact, I was at Leachmere, may it rest in peace, for many years.
A great place, by the way.
It was.
I loved Leachmere.
Everybody did. That was, you know, sort of our special sauce really was that we made customers really feel welcome.
Right.
But, so that, that's my background, right? I ran HR and Labor Relations for a 5,000-person company with three Teamster units, and prior to that, I negotiated labor contracts and handled employment discrimination cases and different things for a variety of employers, including a bunch of local newspapers back when we had a lot of them, from, you know, the Lowell Sun down to the Cape Cod Times, but in the Brookline Schools, actually.
Good.
But anyway, so, that background is something also that I bring to the Board, which is really different. And we're entering an era, you know, every 10 years or so, we go through succession at the top levels of municipal management, and we're nearing that again, and we need to be doing succession planning. We need to think about what is the next set of decisions we're going to make about how we run Lexington and who runs Lexington with us, because the Select Board is certainly the policy arm, but it is the professionals who are able to execute on everything. So, it was important for me to say, I will still contribute in this way, which isn't replicated by any of my colleagues. And so, those two main reasons were the drivers for my deciding to do one more term.
Right, and there are some large mountains to climb. I mean, you know, we've been talking about, you mentioned sort of the, you know, the warrant articles that were passed, that you worked five years on one of them, the other one was basically, you know, to come into compliance with the, with the MBTA mandates, the community mandates, and, but now we're looking straight down at building a high school that's going to cost this community a considerable amount of money. I mean, people say, oh, the market's at 400 million, but I think anybody who's, who's betting is betting it's going to be more than that when it finally comes to fruition. So, you know, having good leaders in place when we have such massive projects coming up, people with that sort of depth of knowledge is, I think, very important, and I, you have that kind of knowledge.
Yeah, so I do. So, I spent five years on the Capital Expenditures Committee, four of them as the Chair, and in fact, it was while I was Chair, it was one of my initiatives to actually start putting a real number on that high school project in our five-year capital plan. So, we're mandated to do five-year capital planning.
That's when it was $50 million, right? I'm just kidding.
No, but I do remember getting up in front of town meeting and doing the, you know, the Capital Expenditures Report and saying, we've always had TBD in the book for this, and you can't add TBD to numbers, and.
To be determined, right?
Exactly.
Just for those folks who aren't getting it right.
Exactly, so it was true, it was to be determined, but you can't do really good fiscal planning around letters. You need numbers.
Right.
So, at the time, Somerville had just passed their debt exclusion, and they were looking at a high school for 1,600 children and $198 million. And so, and this was 2013, 2014, and I said, if this is what we're, our neighbors are looking at, then we need to start putting a number, and I'm going to put a number on the table that I think we should put $300 million in our budget planning. And that came into the Capital Expenditures Report, and that was the first time we really had a number for this. And what that let us do was start making real financial plans. And so, we started looking at what other debt we had, what other excluded debt that we had approved in the last, you know, 10 years or so before that.
Right.
And when that debt would start falling off, because, and I know you know this, but for anybody who doesn't, debt exclusion is passed by the voters and is added to the taxes, but only for the duration of that debt service.
Right, and it's different from when a proposition two and a half override.
Correct.
Which sometimes, sometimes people don't understand the difference.
Yep, no, that's very, it's a very important distinction, because a prop two and a half override, it affects the operating budget of the town, and that is an addition in perpetuity, so that each year you can build 2.5% on top of that.
Right.
A debt exclusion simply says, we're going to borrow this amount of money and we're going to pay this amount in debt, and when we pay off the loan, just like when you pay off a mortgage on your house.
Right.
You own it free and clear.
Right.
And so, we looked at when would we have paid off the debt from some of the early projects we had done at the beginning of the 21st century. And so, we, we knew where that timeline was, where the debt was going to start coming down, and so, we aimed the high school project to fit into that, so that as the debt started to go down would be when we started to pick up the new debt. So, we knew what the number was, we could start planning how, how we would pay for it, and we were able to plan when we would start to pay for it.
And it was pretty insightful for you to think that it could potentially jump up as high as $300 million, because now we're beyond that.
Yeah.
But if we weren't planning that, we'd be in a whole lot of other trouble and not, not nearly prepared, which may have affected our ability to negotiate with the Mass School Building Authority.
That is correct. We actually went in being able to show that we had been planning, been saving, we had also created the, the Capital Stabilization Fund, which we are funding with the increase in taxes from the zoning changes that we did around Hartwell Ave and along Waltham Street, where we've allowed some new construction in the commercial realm, and that new income we are dedicating to defray the cost of the debt service on the high school. And that is going to make a huge difference. I mean, we've only seen the first couple of projects completed. There are a few in the works now, but with only the first couple completed over the last year or two, we have roughly $20 million in that savings account already towards the debt service on the high school.
And that, and that plays in, correct me if I'm wrong, it also plays into a healthy bond rating.
Absolutely.
Because they, because the bond raters want to know that you have that ability and that you're basically forecasting and looking forward. It makes them more comfortable.
It does indeed, and in fact, we have maintained through, we just got rebonded in February when we did our last issuance, we are maintaining a AAA rating, and it also goes to just, not just to that particular savings, but to how we have budgeted and planned and saved and funded, funded things like our retirement plan, which a lot of communities are way behind, and we are really.
We were once fully funded, and then we kind of fell back a little bit, but we're in good shape on.
We are, and we actually, so the recalibration that happens is actually the actuarial accounting, and those, those standards have changed. So, it's not that we went backwards, we didn't lose money, we didn't do anything like that, it's just that the expectation of how many employees we would have who would be collecting other post-employment benefits at any given time and for how long has changed. That's an actuarial change.
I'd like, I'd like to give a shout out to Norm Cohen, a former member of the Board who had a lot of insight, you know, with his, his knowledge about the bonding process, and I know that he really helped, he focused a lot of time and energy on making sure that, that we were in good shape with our bonds and all of that, and in the long run, it's actually saved this community a lot of money.
A lot of money.
A lot of money.
And, you know, Norm had a wonderful experience as a town council himself.
Right.
Right, you know, that was his practice area.
He understood it, right.
He really did.
We were really lucky to have Norm. Not only is he a great guy, but he was a brilliant mind and, you know, a good, a good servant, and, you know, there's my little hello to.
Hello, Norm.
Yeah, hello to Norm. So, but I think it's important to keep costs, you know, control of these costs, because they could grow out of, you know, out of control, and kudos to you for having the foresight when you were head of the Capital Expenditures Committee to be able to sort of look forward at a time when we were also talking about building a new fire station.
Yep.
A new police station, which is nearing completion.
Nearing completion.
Yeah.
And we actually expect move-in for this spring.
Really?
Yeah, and we're going to be doing, I actually got a preview tour of it about a week or so ago, and it's really, really exciting to see. You know, we spent a lot of time, when we went back to the community in 2020, we put a halt on the building, and we went out and we really listened to the community and asked a lot of questions about what people wanted and how they envisioned 21st century police facilities, and so, the building has a lot of community resource built into it. And, you know, I get a lot of questions about why it's, you know, so large, and it is, it does look very large.
It's imposing, yeah.
It is imposing. I'm hopeful that when we have Fletcher Park back again, and when we have the canopies of the solar, which will actually create, you know, some shade spaces and things, that that will break it up a little bit. And part of the issue about the size of it does have to do with the fact that, you know, we are electrifying our entire fleet. We have a fleet electrification policy for the community, and so, the police vehicles are going to be electric vehicles, some of them already are.
Right.
And those don't do as well sitting out uncovered in the snow.
Right.
And frankly, emergency vehicles in general don't necessarily, that's not what I want. If I've got, you know, an emergency and I'm calling 911, I would like to know somebody can jump in the car and come, right?
You don't want to have to wipe the snow off the vehicle first.
So, we do have a lot of both vehicle charging and vehicle maintenance, which we can do onsite now as well, and that's sort of that whole big back part of the building.
Right, plus, plus, you know, like you say, you're forecasting and looking to the future, so you're, you're hoping, you know, the last building was built.
47.
1947. That's a long time ago.
It's a long time ago.
Right.
Policing has changed, you know, we have now facilities for, we have de-escalation training, we have mental health services, we have domestic and family resources, we have some community spaces, because that building is open 24 hours a day, so we can have some meeting spaces in there that don't require us to have to pay overtime to keep another building open. So, you know, there's some, some savings in that. The other thing, and this was a really interesting element that I hadn't necessarily thought about, but there are a lot of things that happen in, you know, sort of our online trade of life these days, where people are meeting strangers, and it's a safe place to meet. So, there's some, you know, some conference space there too, where you can do.
I see that all the time. We, if you want to, if you're buying something on Craigslist or buying something, and not to say that that's an open invitation to go to the police station for every little thing, but do you want a safe place to meet? And, you know, and I think people who are scammers are going to think twice about doing a scam if the transaction is taking, taking place at.
So, it's just another element of safety for the community. There also, you know, are some, some domestic situations where, you know, handoffs and conversations that need to happen in a safer, well-lit space. So, there's a lot, there's also going to be access, if you're at the farmer's market, if you're, you know, at the skating rink, you know, things that happen at that end of town where we didn't have necessarily, you know, restroom facilities. And, you know, we made sure that with both the public and the staff restaurants in that building also, we were very conscious about making sure that we degendered any of the facilities as well, so that everything is truly welcoming and inclusive, and that's been an important piece. We also did that frankly, with the new bathroom facilities that are going to be, you know, available as of the spring at the, at the Center Playgrounds.
Oh, okay.
Another place where.
Yeah, I noticed there's been some work going on over at that facility, that building, because I know that DPW also has a little area that they use, yeah.
Yeah, so that's going to be great, because that, you know, it really improved, you know, safety, it improved the efficiency of the space, but it.
Better lighting too, maybe?
Better lighting, more accessible, and more inclusive, and, you know, those need to be our standards for everything we do. So, I think that, you know, we've done some really great, you know, reimagining, as I said, as we've sort of evolved our agenda in the last, you know, five or six years to really put things like inclusivity and diversity at the, at the forefront of how we look at everything.
Our community has changed a lot, and I was talking with somebody earlier, you know, about the changing complexion of our community with the growth of Asian, you know, Asian families, which includes Indian families, Chinese, Korean. I grew up here, I'm not sure when, how long you've been here, but I grew up here, and I actually celebrate the diversity. I love the fact that we, we are changing. I've learned so much. I've been to some, you know, I went to, recently, I went to two, as I'm sure you probably do, but I think I, because we were in the dragon together.
We were in the dragon together at one. I was at the, I was at both, but yes.
Right, and so, and then I went to Boston City Hall and did the, they had one for the first time ever at Boston City Hall, and a woman who's on our Lex Media Board was the Director of that event.
Oh.
So, I've learned so much about the Chinese culture. I'm looking forward tomorrow to the Lantern Festival.
Yes.
So, it's like, I really, really enjoy this so greatly, and I've learned so much, and I do appreciate that. But with, you know, with a change in community comes changing domains, you know, when we talk about, and I know this is a school committee issue more than anything, but, but, you know, people fear what they don't understand, and sometimes when they, when they see issues of transgender or they see other cultures coming into a, to a, to a, like a school community, and you've got young minds that aren't necessarily fully developed, and they don't really know how to respond to, to this kind of thing, it's important to make sure that we've got leaders in the community that help in that transition and help people to understand and making sure that they're watching over all of this stuff.
Right, and then everyone feels that, I actually, I love someone I heard recently say, not just that they have a seat at the table and that you're inviting them to the seat, but that they own that seat.
Right.
That everybody has a seat, and the question is just, are you all going to sit together? And the answer should be, of course.
Right.
The answer should be, of course, and everybody should know that that is just the way it is. So, I'm not inviting you to my table, you're not inviting me to yours, we both belong here, and so does everybody else.
Right, and just on, you know, to continue on that note, the Holy Festival, the Festival of Colors.
That's wonderful.
I love that.
And the Diwali Celebration last fall.
The Diwali Celebration, we, the Chamber of Commerce finally joined and we did a little something.
It was wonderful.
We're getting, we're going to expand on that next year, but.
And we had our first menorah lighting, actually, also.
Absolutely, and it was extremely well-attended.
It was.
I was really pleased to see that.
Yeah, I actually, I think I may have said this that night, but it was a real thrill for me, because I've stood up on that podium before and welcomed Santa so many times, and to be able to stand there and, you know, be at a menorah lighting and see the same-sized crowd in the community, and I feel that way about each of these, you know, whether it's the Lunar New Year celebrations, the Holy Festival, whatever it is, when we see the whole community come together to celebrate, whether it's their own event or whether it's somebody else in the communities, it brings us all, it enriches us all, it brings us together and it enriches everyone's experience, and I think that is the remarkable thing about Lexington.
Yeah.
To your question, I've been here about 30 years.
Right, okay.
And, and I love that about it. In fact, you know, when my husband and I were looking where, you know, where we wanted to settle, we didn't have kids, we weren't coming from the schools, we actually looked and thought that Lexington, even then, had more diversity than many of its peer communities, and that was important to us.
So, so, just to cut this straight, Abbott's followed you here.
Absolutely, so did Wegmans.
And Wegmans, from Rochester.
From Rochester.
Right.
It's a strong pull.
Well, thank you for that. I spend way too much time, I've lost some weight, but I still spend way too much time at Abbott's, so.
That chocolate almond is just really, you can't get it anywhere else.
It's something else. So, you know, I want to talk, you talked about a little bit of what you, you know, your professional background, but since you've been on the Board, you've spent a lot of time sort of learning from other communities, participating with the Mass Municipal Association, which helps develop leadership capabilities, you, you interact with other leaders from around the state. Tell me a little bit about that and what that's meant to you.
So, that's been a really exciting element of what I've been able to do. So, I was first, I think I joined first through the Massachusetts Select Board Association, and then through a leadership position there, I got onto the Board of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, which, as you said, does do leadership training, it does professional development, it's also the largest lobbying organization on Beacon Hill, in fact, and we lobby on behalf of all 351 cities and towns for issues, both financial and policy, that will impact municipal governance. And last year, I was President of the Organization. I've also served for both Governor Healy and Governor Baker on the Local Government Advisory Commission, which is a state commission that advises, we work with the, many of the different Cabinet Secretaries and the Lieutenant Governor. In fact, I chaired last year with Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, who comes out of municipal governance, so she really gets this.
Mary Salem, is that what it was?
Exactly.
Yeah, Mary Salem.
Exactly. So, you know, it's meant a lot to me to get the professional opportunity to work with so many peers, because whether it's small communities in Western Mass, or whether it's, you know, larger, you know, gateway cities, everybody is still grappling with the same issues.
Right.
Housing, small businesses, transportation, climate change, we're all trying to figure this out, and nobody really is going to solve any one of those problems alone, whether you're a town of, you know, 1,200, a town like we are of 34,000, or a city of 100,000.
Right.
We still all need to work together to figure out what it is that is going to be able to move the needle collectively. So, being able both to share what we're doing here in Lexington out to other communities, to learn what they're doing and be able to bring it back here, or to be able to collaborate, whether it's at the state level through the MMA, or I also serve as Lexington's representative to MAGIC, which is the Minutemen Area, I always, Minutemen Area, I'm going to screw this up, Group on Inter-local Cooperation, it's the G.
Inter-local Cooperation, yeah.
It's such an unusual, or.
Acronym, yeah.
Yes.
I think they made the name fit the acronym.
They absolutely did.
Yeah.
But so, we're the Minutemen Area Group, and it's InterLocal Cooperation, it's a subset of MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. So, we work together on planning on issues that have ranged from DEI, transportation, climate, housing, and we look at how that impacts the region. So, can we work together? And right now, actually, we're doing a lot of work talking about semi-quintcentennial as well.
Right, I wanted, I wanted to ask you about that.
Yeah.
But, but you touched on something, DEI, and some of the other things that are so important to, to communities. You know, we, from what I can understand, from what I understand, we've been a leader in that since, since it became apparent that we needed to do more, right?
Well, I would say that we are leading, we aren't necessarily, we certainly weren't first.
Right.
We certainly were not first, and we certainly have a ways to go still.
Right.
But we are making real change. I mean, I think one of the first things we did was when we left civil service, frankly, and that allowed us to recruit specifically for greater diversity.
Right.
Particularly in the Police Department. We also have made a real effort through the creation of the Chief Equity Officer, which, you know, the, the Select Board argued for the funding for in the budget several years back now.
And it finally, it finally happened.
It has, yes.
We now have a chief equity officer.
We do, we actually have our second Chief Equity Officer, but for the first time this year, we are putting a budget behind that office, because up until now, it has been a single person trying to just juggle all of these, these many different balls. So, we now have a real budget, assuming that the budget gets passed at town meeting in next month, but we have a budget behind this. And, you know, so, the, the importance of that is to look both at whether or not the staff of the town reflects the community, whether or not the staff of the town understands the community, and whether or not the community feels that they have representation, access, and equal ability to partake in the offerings of the community. And it's really, really important to me that every single member of this community feels that they have a place, that they have, that they belong, and that they have equal access to the really exceptional services that we try to offer.
Right, a couple more things, we're going to start winding down, but, and I wish that we had a lot more time, because this conversation is going really well, and I'm, I'm actually learning a great deal. The, you talked about housing, we had a couple of initiatives come out of town meeting last year, I know they're going to go back and fine-tune things a little bit, but you have, we've got the MBTA Village overlays, you know, which was really a mandate from the state that we, we, you know, that actually, we, we accepted as a challenge, and we actually went greater than what was prescribed.
We did.
And, and then, of course, you know, removing the special permitting process out of some of the other, you know.
So, actually, it was more than that, so, it, it did remove special permit from the, the sort of cluster housing concept, but more importantly, we created incentives. So, when a developer owns a piece of land that is large enough to subdivide, they can, with pretty much free rein, just create a traditional subdivision, you know, sort of the big lollipop road, big equal lots, it tends to require that they more or less clear-cut the land, and we just get a bunch of large, single-family homes. And so, what we did, and this was that five-year process, was we put together a very diverse, contradictory group of people, you know, housing advocates, developers, real estate lawyers, realtors. We really had every possible voice at the table to figure out, how do we change the equation, so that it is as attractive for a developer who owns that piece of land to create housing that meets what we want?
Right.
As opposed to just, is the path of least resistance? And so, what is included in the, the final product is, you know, we got rid of the mandate that you only put single-family homes.
Right.
Right, so now you can put a duplex, and you can put multiple units in a single house.
That makes me happy, the duplex thing, because I think we could do those, and they'll fit nicely in pretty much any neighborhood in the community if they're done right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So, we changed a couple of other things, we added a requirement for strengthening the regulations around site-sensitive protections and a site-sensitive development, and we really tried to create the incentive for somebody to come in and instead of build just more single-family, large homes multiplied on what had been a single, single home, if we're going to have more homes on the lot, let's at least say, let's have them be smaller. So, one of the alternatives under the Special Residential Development allows you to have multiple housing where the average size has to be no more than 2,550 feet, and the largest unit can't be more than 2,800 square feet. So, this will allow a different kind of creation, instead of having, you know, four 6,000-square-foot houses that, you know, get you to your 24,000 square feet, perhaps instead you'll have 12 twos.
Right.
And so, that's the kind of encouragement that we want.
Right, and that can, that falls under what, what you'd call maybe attainable housing, you know.
Correct.
Which is just, it, it, you know, it's not considered low income or moderate income, you know, which is just, it, you know, it's not considered low income or moderate income, but it's attainable for some folks.
Well, so there's two pieces to it. So one is that, yes, by simply having them be smaller and more of them, we hope that that will help. We can't control the open market, but we hope that will help drive down a little bit of the pricing. But in addition, we did require 15% of the gross square floor area of what you develop must be actual true low-income, deed-restricted, and listed on the SHI.
So somebody could actually come in and buy it at a price, so it's not a rental opportunity, it's an actual...
So that's to be determined. Well, that's to be determined. Whether the, again, we're not, we're not dictating what the project is. If the developer creates a housing opportunity, it could be a purchase. If they create a rental opportunity, it would be rental.
Right.
And there actually was a really interesting article today in The Globe about how Boston is trying to create new opportunities for low-income housing purchase, because that is a really tough nut to crack.
It really is.
Because the problem is, if you're going to create low-income housing in perpetuity, if you allow someone to purchase it, they're not going to get that wonderful, you know, what we call the generational, you know, increase that you get from holding on to real estate, because it's still going to be limited.
But we have that with Muzzy, because there are covenants in Muzzy, so the Muzzy condos, and that's still in place. And it's worked.
It does work. You don't get that generational wealth, but you do get some uptick. So it's not the same, it's not going to solve the problem that we're seeing.
You're talking about my father who spent $11,000 for his home, and then, you know, when he passed, it was sold for over $700,000. So that's the generational thing.
You're not going to get that. You're not going to get that generational transfer of wealth. But you do get to use, you know, at least this Boston program is now using vouchers towards mortgage payments, which is a really exciting opportunity.
Well, that's good. I'm going to, we got to close out. I know, and I've enjoyed this conversation, and I'm glad we were able to cover several topics. I want you to tell people where they can learn more, but I do want you to just take a couple of seconds and just talk about what's coming up with the 250th.
Okay.
Or the semi...
The semi-quintcentennial, that's the biggest part of it. If you can say that, you're good.
Yeah.
So very briefly, we are still in the early stages of planning. We have a local committee, a Lexington-based committee. We are working in cooperation with the larger state commission on this. We have partners in the region. Susie Berry is the chair of that, Mona Roy is the co-chair. And they are meeting, their meetings are posted. There are a lot of them that have already happened in sort of collaboration with our neighbors. There's going to be a lot of exciting events. We are going to be trying some new things even this year for Patriots Day. As we build toward it, we are expecting a real influx of new tourism and new excitement around the history of Lexington, being able to share that really with the world. So it's very exciting. There's going to be a lot of opportunity for engagement across the community. There is an article in the warrant this year for some funding towards it, and an article to invite the royal family from England to come back and see what they lost.
You're talking about Paul McCartney and the Beatles?
Absolutely, I am.
Aren't they the royal family?
Yeah, I think that's it. I think that's it. I might argue with you, it's the Stones, but I'll let you go with it.
I'll give you that. I'll give you that. Well, good. Well, I'm glad it's all moving forward. I'm looking forward to it. I remember watching President Ford arrive. I think that was, I think I said this at a public meeting, that's the moment I was indoctrinated into what it means to be from Lexington, watching the President lay a wreath at the Minuteman statue. I think I was 13, so it was a long time ago.
My uncle was the general counsel for the American Freedom Train.
Oh, really?
So I didn't get to Lexington in '76, but I got to go on the Freedom Train a whole bunch of times.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Tell people where they can get more information.
So more information, my website, which is pretty easy, it's jillhaye.com. If you don't know how to spell hae, it's H-A-I. So jillhaye.com. You can also always reach me, jillhalex@gmail.com. And if it's an issue related to the town as opposed to the election, I hold office hours in the Select Board Office on Thursday mornings at 10:30.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate you coming and being with us. I wish you all the best. I know you're working hard, so...
It's really...
And it's almost over. The election is coming. It's about a week away or so, week and a few days, so...
Yep. But it's exciting. I mean, I love, I love Lexington. I love serving on the board, and I really do hope to get to do it another three years.
Thank you for your service on the board. All right.
Thank you.
Well, we'll see you out there in the next few days in the final run of the campaign.
Awesome. Thanks.